Seeing that it's 7 o'clock, open the meeting for the zoning board. On the agenda tonight, we have the here for continuous petition 960, and it's being continued. So we won't have a...
Again?
Yes, it's being continued. Because the planning board hasn't rendered a decision yet.
Can we get a notice for the next time we need to notice this? Has the... And has the property changed because of Gary? Or is it still two different?
Yeah, I saw something on the planning board, and it was 49 and 63 cover for a pole barn.
Yeah, that's what it is. They're putting a pole barn up. Yeah, they're putting a pole barn up. That's what it is, a pole barn.
Yeah, but that isn't the question.
One or two?
Gary, the middle one?
One structure, one pole barn.
Okay, so...
Looking for two structures.
He's looking for two structures.
Yeah, it was supposed to be two.
It's commercial. One of it's going to be commercial, one's residential.
Okay, 'cause I noticed on the planning board, it said, um, Podgursky for 49 and 63. Well, 63 was Villiers.
That's because there was the site plan for the whole space. I think that's why.
So the law's already been accepted?
Yeah.
But, uh...
You just said something there. You said part of it is commercial and part of it is residential.
Yeah, I think the residential part of it is only going to be for storage. Only the commercial.
What happened to the question as going to be industrial?
Not industrial.
Yeah.
Well, that's what they were doing for the idea of welding and welding.
We haven't gotten a decision from the planning board yet. So when we get the decision from them, we'll let you know.
Okay.
Okay. But are they still going forward with the land property?
Yeah, we haven't heard from the planning board yet.
Any idea how long this is continuing to?
Oh, we don't know until, you know, when they meet again.
Okay, 'cause I know they're gonna sit down on, what, the 17th of January.
Sorry about that.
Whether to come or not to come.
Check on the website, too, because they should be...
That's how we found out that it was supposed to be tonight, because it was listed.
Okay.
I'll make a motion for petition 960 to continue it.
Sorry, guys, I just wanted to interrupt. Can I change the status? Stay who's present for the members, or will we be in person?
Can you say who's present for the members, in person, Andrew Mollin?
Bye, everybody.
The members are present tonight. Bob Dergen. Bob Dergen.
Jerry Joy.
Casaya Nazrallah.
Tina Kenyon.
And Dan Buzari.
Roboli is Dan Buzari.
So I'll make a motion for petition 960 to continue at 12 March 14th meeting.
I'll second it.
Do we have a time, Alana?
Um, maybe at 7:00.
7 o'clock?
Yeah.
Should we be checking beforehand to see how they're doing the planning, to make sure we keep it on there?
I can keep you guys updated on that. And I think, uh, so on January 11th, I did send you all the site plan.
Yep.
Um, in case we had any comments to make, to go back to the planning board if needed to. Um, but yes, I think definitely keep you guys updated.
Uh, can you continue?
Yeah.
Yes.
Just in case some changes.
Continue?
Yes, continue.
Dan?
You guys want to continue it?
Yes.
Okay.
And myself, yes. That's done with. Our second thing is the decision from the building inspector that we asked him on 648 and 688 to find out what's going on on the property. Mr. Andrews. Would you like to read that?
Oh, you'd like me to?
Yeah, please.
Peter, you should be here. You're the reader.
All right.
Per your request, I conducted inspections at 648 Plymouth Street and 688 Plymouth Street below my findings. 648 Plymouth Street. One, the property has been under the same ownership for 35 years. Two, the property is zoned B business. Three, there are currently two residential apartments on this property. Four, there was no stockpile of material on the property when I inspected it. Five, the owner uses 648 Plymouth Street for his business address as it is zoned business. Six, there is a permit signed on the property. Wait, sorry, this is permit, permitted sign on the property. Seven, there is no special permit for this property in the building department files. Eight, there have been multiple permits issued over many years that have required onsite inspections. 688 Plymouth Street. One, this property has been under the same ownership for 35 years. Two, the owner resides on the property. Three, the property is zoned AR agricultural residential. Four, the piles of materials sometimes seen from the street are being used to develop an adjacent property which is under the same ownership. Five, the owner parks personal vehicles and equipment on the property when not in use. Six, there have been multiple permits issued over many years that have required onsite inspections. Based on the information, I have determined that the property located at 648 and 688 Plymouth Street are not in violation of 167-7C light industrial uses including manufacturing, storage, processing, fabrication, packaging, and assembly. The two families protected under MGL 40A Section 7. It is also my determination that both properties are further protected by Chapter 40A and Section 7 of the Mass General Laws.
Mr. Perry, you went through the whole property, and that's what you... This is your opinion of what was there? Anybody have any comments or...
So the apartments on the property, there's no special permits on the property? There should be a special.
No, my fault.
There should be a special permit, right?
They've been here a long time. They've been grandfathered.
Is that right, Peter?
Say that again.
So, having two apartments, shouldn't there be a special permit for duplex?
Yeah, it's... If it's, if it's a multifamily or they have multiple units, probably. But it depends on when that started.
Do you know when it was built?
I don't know.
35 years within the bylaws.
The guy's on it.
I mean, if, to be honest, it's... It will be appealed to us, or it will be, yeah, like, if we're not the original people again. So if, like, if it's a zoning violation, I think it calls to Jim. Right? And he is making determinations. I don't know. I didn't hear in that letter whether or not a special permit was required. But we wouldn't be the people who would be enforcing that anyway. I don't think.
So it's been there for 35 years.
I mean, uh, there was a fire on the property at some point. And, uh... You know, the building inspector and the deputy fire chief went through and filed a report way back when. The building inspector, uh, you know, commented in the report that there were and fire, deputy fire chief, that there were two apartments in the premise. I mean, so this has been, who knows how long it's been? Okay? Uh, one of the former building commissioners' family lived in one of them. Okay? Here we are today.
Dan, you have any input?
Well, there's no, there's no statute of limitations on the use.
But it, but Dan?
You can leave the use as...
It was in use.
The building is protected as far as the use, but the use is not.
I believe the six-year, uh, there's a protection on use and, uh...
No, and I have to show that. Could you, could you send our board that ready?
I'll send you Chapter 49, Section 7. Forty, uh, it's Chapter 48, 7, Section 7.
And what about the, um... You're saying that the other properties not being used as a contract as yet?
All the, all the equipment is personally owned and the vehicles are personally registered. From what I'm told, okay?
Right, well, there's been plenty of instances in town where we do not allow people to use their home as the ground base for storing their construction equipment. We've had these issues on Power Street and other places. I mean, if, if, if you're using the property as a contract as yet, that's a violation.
I don't believe, I don't believe he's using it as a contract as yet. He packs his stuff here. He's a one-man show. When he's not using it on a job, he packs it there. It's his own equipment. Since when can't somebody pack something they own now?
Because he did, because there was the, uh, they did try in 1987 to get a, um, special permit, which was denied.
I don't know about that.
You don't know about that?
No.
Oh, well, it's in the records. Um, it's my opinion that they need a special permit for, around 684. But the board, you know, do, do what you want to do.
Uh, you know, I, I talked to the owner. I don't think he's against coming in for a special permit at all. I mean, it's been going on. I mean, it's no mystery.
So he's been, I mean, it's been under the same, uh, same ownership for 35 years?
Right.
Both parcels? And, uh...
Section 7 calls for 10 years.
What's that?
Section 7 is 10 years.
Can you read it, please?
There's two parts of that.
I'm not reading this whole thing.
There's two parts of it. One, this is six years and 10 years.
First paragraph?
It's way down there, doesn't it? Let me get back to it, 'cause let us read them.
I, I, I think that, that the building inspector's decision is, is what's paramount here. I guess, well, from my perspective, we got, in, in that hearing, and we've mentioned it a couple times when this has come up, we got information there might have been a zoning violation based on business there. And then we saw a, a real estate listing saying that it was public sites as multifamily without a special permit. So I think that's why we referred it, because that stuff came to us. Just like anybody in town would refer that to the building inspector. I, I, I wonder, like, I'm not seeing... Like, I'm, like, I'm not seeing exactly how, whether or not, like, there's been no discussion on us, what a statute of limitations would be. I mean, I don't think that was advertised as a multifamily, you know, property 35 years ago. I think that's much more recent than that. But very honestly, I don't, I don't know if it's within or out of our scope to issue any sort of, you know, decision based on that. I think, you know, members themselves can have a disagreement with the, the building inspector's assessment or something. But in the end, I mean, that's what his job is. So when he decides to do that or not, uh, that's on him. Um, and I think that, that, you know, I think if he's gone out there and done that, and this is his assessment. And very honestly, he just described right now, um, you know, he, he believes that it's just the owner's business that he's, he has the trucks there. He probably knows better than I do. Um, but for the, and that, and I think that concern is explained a little bit better than the apartments. It sounds like there are apartments there, but there's no special permit. There's really been no decision on what steps the building inspector would take to make sure this, that the zoning will be upheld in that case. But, but to be very honest, I don't think we have a role in enforcing it. I think that's what his job is. So it's either he does something or he doesn't do something, but that's on him, you know? I think we just referred this to him, and we appealed other people's decisions. I, I, I have personal feelings, I guess, about how thorough this is, but at the same time, it's not my job to make that decision, I guess, right?
Well, all my concern is, and it has been from the very beginning, that is, all residents are treated equal. And there's been plenty of instances where maybe a house was listed, listed for sale that was listed with an apartment, a real estate apartment, and this time I said, whoa, 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 and gone. And had, and addressed that with the old firm, so... In other words, this is not the first time where, you know, the, the town is making sure that, you know, things are done properly and permitted properly. So just moving forward, you know, we don't want to expose ourselves or be accused of, oh, we're doing favors for one person or one family, and not enough. That's what I will caution with this.
Dan and Peter?
Does there any due to?
Dan and Peter, 688 is Mr. Andrews' residence, right? You confirm that?
Yes.
Okay. But 648 is the one, in your opinion, uh... Does 648 have more than one use? Does, is there, is there a multiple family there?
There's, there's two apartments.
There's two apartments there. But it's, it's supposed to be a single-family home. But there is no permit for...
There's no special permit.
There's no special permit.
I mean, I got paperwork here back from 97, from the assessors office, I believe it came from.
So it's been...
It said it's a true family.
It's been a true family for a long time.
Yeah.
This says, "If real property has been improved by an erection or alteration of one or more structures, and the structures or alterations have been in existence for a period of at least 10 years and no notice of an action, suit, or proceeding as to an alleged violation of this chapter or any ordinance of bylaws adopted under this chapter has been reported in the registry of deeds for the county or district in which the real estate is located, or in the case, registered land has been filed in the registry district." Sorry for the wrong. "In which the land is located within a period of 10 years from that date, the structures..."
What do we do in this case?
"...the structures were erected and the structures shall be deemed for zoning purposes to be legal non-performing structures."
We're not going to contest this. We're not going to contest this.
Yes, the structure, yes, the structure, not the use.
Six years of use and structures.
I've read that before. That's...
The six years of...
Not the use. Hey, this decision is a decision.
Structures?
But just moving forward...
The six-year statute calls out for land use as well as structures.
Where does it say that?
It's in, it's in the law.
It's talking about the structures, not the use. But hey, your decision is your decision.
I read this like 100 times.
Yeah, I've read the thing, whether you have it, and I talked to a lot of people about it. We're professionals in, in the industry. Absolutely, the use, there was no statute of limitations on the use. The use and the use, the building is the building, use separate. But your decision is your decision. We just have to be consistent. If somebody comes before us in the future, will this be an easy process?
What is the part of the board? Except for the building inspector's decision?
Yeah, I mean, uh, he is the enforcing agent. And if this is the report and he sees no problems there, then, uh... Yeah, I accept his, I accept his report. As far as in the future, if someone comes up and says something, they would have to do the same thing. They would have to go back to the building inspector and say, hey, look at me, I think this is a violation. And again, he would have to go out and, and look at it. Because we're not the ones that are saying it's okay. So if there's a problem out there, it has to go through
The building inspector.
The building inspector. And that's, that's the way it has to, it has to go. He's the one that does the inspections, and he's written up the report. If there's problems in the report, then that's something that someone else will look at later on. But as far as, uh, I can see, he's given us the report, and he says everything is fine.
Section 6.
As Charlie said, though, if we don't agree with it, we can't, who do we appeal to?
Yeah, so, no. And I mean, we've got to respect his, uh, his decision.
How do you feel?
It's been like the 35 years.
We have to, we have to, you know, we... We have to look at it, and he gave us a report, and...
So, I mean...
Either we accept it or we don't. If you don't accept it, well, who do we go to? We don't go to Milley. We just learn from, from this mistake and try to do a better...
Sure.
We don't have the board.
I mean, you guys know I could drive all over town, and I could pick up houses on every street, multiple.
No, believe me, we are...
You know, now what are we going to do with the guy that's got a bobcat that he cleans the snow out of his job with it? And he likes to play with it on weekends? We want to go after him?
Section 6.
So Perry, I guess the, our, our point is that we didn't, people came to us with this stuff.
That's fine.
I mean, it came up in a hearing, and then people have been mentioning stuff. So they think that we are either ignoring it by not passing it over, or...
It's just going on too long.
I mean, to be very honest, if that's what you think, okay, I'm fine with that.
I think it's been going on.
Like, I don't, I'm not a building inspector, so if that's, if that's what you think, that's fine.
It's going on for three building inspectors.
We're just passing it over.
It's going on for three building inspectors, and now all of a sudden it's an issue. That's my point.
Section 6.
That's not, like, that's not why the, the report is, is worded the way it is. Because the, the report is my report.
Yep.
But there's been three buildings.
Very frankly, if we'd gotten these reports, three building inspectors, then I think we probably would have referred it to three building inspectors.
Exactly. Wouldn't even be an issue.
Right. Yep.
That's the point going forward. He wanted to figure out how to take care of things going forward. If you know of something, you got to jump on.
Yep.
Exactly.
You know...
Well, I, I think we should...
And I, in talking with the gentleman, I don't think that there's a problem with him coming in and filing a special permit and getting things cleaned up. And now we're there, you know, whether it's, you know, it's too broad, I can't speak for him.
No, nobody speaks for anybody else. We go along with... We just make the whole, we accept you. We got to clear out the books and everything, okay?
Section 6 seems as though you can go between one and two families as long as you're not increasing area footage with depth of the yard requirements or zoning laws that's filed for a period of five years from its effective date. This is a lot of legal on their table. Wow.
Do we need a motion to accept the building inspector's decision?
I don't think we need to. I think he filed his report, and I don't think we need to take any further action.
All right.
Right?
Right. I mean, we don't have to vote on it. And we, he gave us his report, and we have to accept his report.
I did speak to this town like a well-sold...
The only other thing that I was questioning most, um, you're saying the town has the property recorded as a multifamily?
No, the town has it as a single family.
Okay.
But there's an inspection report on the back of the, uh... Well, maybe that's from... I don't know. There's some inspection report that I got that shows that just a bunch of boxes checked off.
So the town property that says single unit, you think somewhere else it says multiple?
Well, the town says it's a single family.
Okay. Now, you say two apartments, so is there one main residence, two apartments, or is it a three unit or a two?
No, two units.
Okay.
That's an easy thing to fix, though. He could, so, because I have gone through this before, you could file it with the registry of deeds to just make it into a two-family. That's something Mr. Andrews can take care of, just so that it's on the top of the record correctly.
Well, I think he means that I think you need a special permit and not make it registry deeds.
I don't think you do.
You have to file if you're...
Because it says that it could be either.
Either or.
Right. I'm not, I'm not positive. Like, I don't, this is all new to me, but...
I think, I think we should just accept the building inspector's decision and move forward.
I agree. You know, we shouldn't keep this thing air. We've got the report. That's all we need.
That's it.
Well... Alana, we don't, do we have to vote in this, Alana, or we all split away?
I'm going to leave that totally up to you guys. Sorry.
I think we're good.
I don't think we do either.
We have a discussion on that.
Well, thank you for your report. I appreciate it.
Yep. Thank you.
Bye.
Yep, have a good night.
So we move on to the minutes of January 10th, 2022. Anybody read the minutes?
I did.
Any corrections or...
I didn't see any. It sounded all right to me.
Do we want to make a motion on January 10 min, 10 minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes of Monday, January 10th, 2022.
Second?
On the table?
Aye.
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 Yes. Yeah, could you guys just remote call? With that vote, please, thanks.
Bob?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Pass is five to zero. Now, the minutes for January, uh... No, I don't want to get out of... January, uh, January 19th, 2020, Country Club Estates. They want to come back in April 6th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. And that's all for the minutes. There's no bills.
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes of January 19th, 2022.
Second?
On the table?
Aye.
That would be, uh...
Tina, yes.
Dan, I think was on, no, Peter was on.
Peter.
Yes.
Bob.
Bob, yes.
Yes.
Sorry.
I wasn't here, so I can't vote.
And then Jerry, would you mind signing those for me, please?
Sure. I mean, leaving it in the folder, Alana?
Sure, nevermind, thank you.
Okay.
We all have to sign, right?
No, I just have to sign it. That was for the minutes.
Yep.
Yeah. I don't see anything on the, you can first... Do we have to sign for the minutes of, uh, Monday, January 10th also?
Um, I've been using, uh, Kaisaya's, uh, signature stamp.
Okay.
He said that was okay to do. If that's still okay, I can continue.
Very good. I don't think we've had a meeting like this since I've been on the board. It's too quick. Peter, is, is there something that's going to interrupt us? We won't be able to finish this meeting tonight? Okay, we, we have no bills, right? Yeah.
No bills.
It's a cheap one.
Where the minutes for the, uh...
She's going to take your stamp. She'll take care of that.
All right. Seeing that we have nothing else to do? Want to make a motion?
Did the selectman have a, uh, meeting on the associate? Did they have that meeting yet?
They said they voted for somebody.
It was Friday.
They voted for somebody, they voted somebody in.
Do we know?
Yes, they, um, they appointed Marlene Amady.
Who did they vote in?
Marlene Amady.
Marlene?
Marlene.
Marlene?
She, yeah, she, um, she expressed interest, and I think she interviewed last summer.
Did she run for school candidate?
I think that's why I recognize the name.
I believe she's on the ADA commission or something.
I think it's who you're thinking it is. I think she did run for school. I think she did run for school committee.
That's what I, I heard, and then...
Yeah, I think you're right.
Uh, just to give you a quick, quick update on the zoning bylaw review committee updates. Uh, we haven't had a meeting since the last meeting that we had back in December. Uh, the new lawyers that we have, I haven't got together, we haven't got together with them yet. Uh, we should have a shot, we have with this soon, and then we'll continue on with it. So I think it's gonna be a, a slow process.
Mm-huh. Real slow process.
Yep.
Any other business?
I think that's it.
You wanna make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn at seven thirty-one.
Second.
Who wants to second it?
Second.
Please, stop.
Oh, yes. Yes.
Tina, yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Good night, everybody.
What about you, Dan?
Thanks, guys.
Dan?